We'll just probably have to replace some boards because all the upper structures
Sure.
have been replaced in the last five years and we replace them as we need to go.
Okay. So everything's checking out?
Yeah, everything's checking out. The only problems that we've had in the past were with was with the underwater aeration system that we have. It's approximately twenty years old and the piping is it's corroded so we're gonna get away from that system and we're actually using what I consider what I call a throw-in aerator. You just hook it up to electrical and it aerates the area.
Sure.
You know, so you've always got water. It's not freezing and that's worked out pretty good for us.
Good.
Other than that, um, they're in, you know, fairly good shape.
Good.
How is demand for slips this year?
Demand?
Demand, yeah.
Oh, we have a waiting list for, um, we're gonna, we're gonna be full again this year.
Good, awesome.
Yeah, but with the, some, there's maybe like four or five slips, Chris, that are kind of in the undesirable side. We use those for tangents. But we've had, um, we added nineteen, um, PWC slips for for dinghies and jet skis and we've got a waiting list for that.
Good.
So it's been a, it's been pretty popular for us down there. And we've turned into a pretty good destination for, uh, the dooms for people that are kayaking. You wouldn't believe the amount of kayaks that we have down there now. In the last few years, it's really caught on. It's a nice place to launch a kayak.
Okay, awesome.
Anything else?
Great job, Barbie.
Thank you.
Good bar.
Thank you.
Come around more often, okay? Alrighty, looks like we're moving on to, uh, next subject.
I would like to introduce ordinances and we would like to start with the first reading.
Can we go back just real quick on standing committees?
Standing committees, yes.
I wanted to give an update on, um,
It was my fault, not his.
I I attended the Congressional City Conference, uh, back in March. Um, there's been a large push at the federal level from National League of Cities. Karen Freeman-Wilson, the mayor of Gary is the president of National League of Cities this year, um, on infrastructure. So I wanted to give an update on just where legislation is. So far, National League is pushing for a trillion dollar infrastructure plan. Um, and they're also pushing for money to go directly to municipalities as opposed to going to states and counties because it tends to not, uh, filter down to local municipalities. The, I did meet, uh, had the opportunity to meet with a few other mayors and clerk treasurers, uh, with Senator Braun and Senator Young while we were there. Uh, there is a push, uh, from the administration for a twenty eighty match on federal funds. That's a flip from the current eighty twenty match. And then, uh, Senator Braun has been pushing for a fifty fifty match. Uh, so remind you, we're currently at eighty twenty on federal funds. Um, so anything you can do to reach out to both senators' offices, uh, National League of Cities is really pushing to leave it alone at eighty twenty and to allow the money to come directly to municipalities as opposed to going through the state. Uh, trillion dollars can go a long way. It's not enough to solve the problem, but that has been a push at the national level. Uh, and that's what the, the conference was mainly focused on, this infrastructure this year, so. Wanted to just give an update.
Great job, Colin. Thank you for doing that and thanks for going out there, bringing back that information for us. Colin, I somewhat briefed me when you come back and, uh, we're aware of that. We're getting a letter off to both of those senators. Senator Braun will be in town, uh, a few weeks as well, so we'll, uh,
Need to tell him how bad fifty fifty actually is.
He'll be in the county, he'll be in, for you, but he'll be in the county, so we will, uh, make sure we let him know loud and clear, uh, the problems with his fifty fifty match. All right, now I think you're ready there, sir.
Was that it for standing committees? We all good?
We're all good.
Thank you. Now, I would like to introduce ordinances and we would like to start with the first reading.
Go in a C to M two on the property, on the property commonly known as parcel sixty-four oh five twenty-four three twenty-six oh oh seven oh sixteen or the thirty-two point seven four acres south of Loot Road and north of the Augusta Center subdivision and which is legally described on exhibit A attached here too. See also Alta survey attached here as to exhibit B. Let the record reflect this has been read in full.
Motion to suspend?
Second.
We actually can't suspend that on its own accord.
Oh.
Just perjury.
Oh, perjury. Okay, that's it.
What would you?
Oh, like here.
So you, out of zoning ordinance, you don't need suspension, so you take action on it.
Oh. Just go ahead and change your motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Second.
Motion to deny, uh, let's call a roll.
Can't pay a public comment?
Sure.
All right, we, we, we've agreed. We've agreed. So if anyone would like to, uh, come up and speak to this, uh, this ordinance that's, uh, upon the floor here about the Augusta Center, uh, parcel, you can line up at the microphone and, uh, give us your thoughts. I hope I heard the right thing. All right, the motion on the floor is to deny.
Um, what I wanna say is, I'll just, uh, be, make it brief as a resident. We were all sent letters and, uh, for this Redwood, uh, corporation of, as homeowners on Loot Road, and only, I think it was like thirty-five families got it. It didn't go into Savannah Heights, which I thought was unkind unfair because we're all neighbors. And when we had, um, I talked to some city officials and they were unaware of the meeting that we had at the library with them. And at the meeting, uh, and then we went to the public hearing afterwards, uh, with the planning commission. Uh, what Redwood had told us is, was a lot of it was completely opposite of what they, uh, provided at the, uh, the public hearing. And it was kind of unfair for our, the residents because the attorneys in that for Redwood got to speak first and they presented their case and then we were allowed to su- support our case, but then they had a rebuttal to us and we didn't have any more. That was it. We couldn't, we couldn't speak anymore. And all I have to say, I, I mean, I appreciate, you know, with, um, the public service that, you know, we are elected officials do and I hope that their interests, the council and everything is in the interest of this, uh, people of Portage. Because, uh, there's, like I said, I've been there for forty-two years and there's a lot of good people out Savannah Heights and we put up with the traffic and we're patient on Loot Road, which is very bad, but that's not the issue here. That would complicate the issue. But it, to put it in a nutshell, is how does it benefit Portage? The hardworking taxpayers that take pride in their property and they have neighbors and a lot of people spoke at the, uh, public hearing that they moved here from Illinois and everything of all different blocks of life to be able to have neighbors and own a home, calling it Portage because they liked, or, you know, they liked the community. And to have just these apartments, apartment people, you know, that's fine, but they're not gonna be permanent residents. They're gonna be in and out and you know, there's not an ownership there. And I just, my question is, I guess this sums up, how does a company out of state that was, this was stated to us at the first meeting, how does it benefit Portage if they disregard the concerns of, uh, the public, of the residents and was stated to us personally by one of the representatives, we're gonna make a heck of a lot of money on this? I don't understand how that benefits Portage because that was the question we asked, how does this benefit, you know, our community?
Good question.
And that's the answer we got. So that, I rest my case. Thank you for the answer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan Combs.
Yeah. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
I'd like to say a few things.
Sure.
I sit on the planning commission and this was brought before its planning commission and it was voted, I think, six to one and I was the only one who opposed this, but I listened to, I think it was thirty-five residents came up and spoke. Not one in favor of it and I have to agree with them. I think the additional traffic would be a nightmare right now on Loot Road. And I think, uh, they, these were rental units and we would, we would get a lot of people in and out. And I don't think that's the right fit for, right across from a, a nice subdivision as Savannah Heights to allow something like this as a rental unit to go in. If they were owner occupied, that would be a different story. But that is why I opposed the, uh, the planning commission to, I didn't wanna see this go in. It was mainly because the residents, the residents were very upset and, um, I have to agree with them. I wouldn't want it going across the street from my subdivision.
Alright, anyone else? Alrighty, let's call a roll.
Councilperson Modesto?
Yes.
Councilperson Clem?
Yes.
Councilperson Williams?
Yes.
Councilperson Fecetti? Councilperson Zilly?
Yes.
Councilperson Prisco?
Yes.
Councilperson Lynch?
Yes.
The ordinance fails. Thank you, everyone, that is, uh, that have been passionate about this and, uh, we, uh, piece of, uh, property is gonna be stay as it is, so. Thank you, uh, Councilperson Modesto for leading the charge on that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alrighty. Next up?
Next, we would like to talk about the second part of the first reading of ordinances and it is a part in test.
We're gonna assign this to Mark and so I guess one of them need to try it real quick.
Hold up, hold up.
The, the statute for approval of the impact fee ordinance, there's a requirement that the councils give a notice of its intent of its intent to consider the proposal, uh, pursuant to the open door laws, in other words, forty-eight hours in advance. So I think this evening, it would be appropriate to hear a presentation maybe uh, about the study and so forth and then defer action to main meeting and authorize the giving of that notice.
So Greg and I talked before the meeting, so after the presentation, you should take a vote to authorize the issuance of that notice. The next meeting will be a first.
Alright, so the, uh, recreation impact fee study is the, uh, Mr. Lehman, how are you? Welcome aboard, sir.
It's, how do you spell your last name?
Sure, Chuck Lehman, L E H M A N.
Thank you.
And I'm, uh, president of Lehman Lehman Land Department and Planters of Michawak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think, uh, you were distributing either digitally or our copies, uh, the, the study document and then there was a PowerPoint presentation um, that I also had prepared. I, just for sake of time, I will give an overview of what the study involves and if you have any questions, I can answer that. I'll have to come back next month to bring this forward then too. Uh, the impact fee statute, uh, uh, the city has had, I think, three ordinances for, for that. Uh, the, the study update, uh, the ordinance itself only lasts for five years. The study looks at a ten-year projection of population growth and recreational deeds. Uh, and then the, uh, impact fee ordinance itself is adopted. Uh, it takes, uh, it has a lifespan of five, five years, they said. What we did through the process is we looked at the, uh, the growth that has happened in the last five years, we looked at the residential building permits. Uh, and then we, we forecast what that ten-year projection of, of population would be. We worked with the planning department, with Kurt, uh, intensely working out where those parcels of land and that development could take place. We also, uh, looked at existing, uh, uh, lots that haven't been built upon in existing developments and we also factored those in as well. Uh, with that forecast, we had projected that in the next ten years there will be, um, uh, additional, almost, uh, well, thirty-seven hundred new residents coming to the, to the community and a, um, uh, the residential building permits of almost fifteen hundred building permits themselves. Uh, after we forecast, uh, population, we also look at the inventory of the recreational, um, uh, infrastructure that we have currently. And that would include anything from miles of trails and it also includes, uh, a number of ball fields, uh, basketball courts and so on. And we factored those into that. Part of the process, the statute also, I should mention this earlier. Uh, we, we needed to, uh, form an advisory committee that worked with us, uh, in this process. The advisory committee was made up of a certain percentage of real estate, uh, people. Uh, people also who are developers and also homeowners so that they represent that, that industry in this process. We, uh, went through a, a listing of almost thirty-five different recreational components. Part of the, uh, committee themselves helped us figure out what would be the best, uh, uh, components that would best serve by using this as a, a fee that, uh, could be used for infrastructure development. They, this time they picked out four areas, uh, excuse me, three areas, uh, park and shelters and dees eagles, also trails and, and also park acreage. So on that listing of thirty-four, uh, we, we selected, uh, three that would be put through the, uh, calculations. Uh, we went through that process. The details are in the documentation. Uh, it, it showed that there was a current deficiency, uh, of fifty-one thousand dollars uh, and a future need of one point four seven million dollars. Uh, the fifty-one thousand would be funded, um, and this would be for the, uh, shortage of, of park shelters through TIF funding, which has been, uh, the typical process of what the park agency has, has utilized before for funding, uh, some of the park shelters. Uh, and then the one point four million, uh, would be funded from the growth of new population through the impact fee itself. Uh, the, the details, uh, are all in the, in the documentation. I know for you is a lot of the, the, the numbers. We spent about a half hour last night in the planning commission going through those details and there's a lot of numbers to be talked about in that time period. So, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions that we have at this point.
At the end of the ten-year period, there's like, the last three or years, there's like a big spike in the, in the growth rate, you know? It goes from averaging, you know, hundred, hundred and twenty and then all of a sudden it's two, two forty, two, two eighty-seven. What's, what's caused the projection at that very end spike?
Uh, I think in two thousand seventeen, there was, uh, almost three hundred residential building permits. I think that was some of the new development that was going on and they all happened at the same, same time.
No, I'm talking in the future. I'm saying you've, you've projected out twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, two hundred and two, two hundred and forty-two, two hundred and eighty-seven new building permits each year. I was just.
Some of that, we, it's, it's hard to speculate.
Okay.
We went through the details of how much could be, uh, factored in, in that ten-year period. Uh, you'll notice that's not a straight line.
That's what caught my attention.
And grow upon that.
Right.
Keep in mind that in four years and five years, you'll be coming back and studying this again because of that, uh, time span of the ordinance. So we wanna be conservative on our front end. We still capture in that, in the breadth of, well, that growth in that ten-year period.
Yeah.
The money is generated by this impact fee. Where will we see, uh, changes taking place first?
Sure, the, uh, again, they, you can always spend the money on what is factored into, into the calculation. So in this case, it'll be used for shelters, it'll be used for, uh, trails, uh, expansion and also new.
Have any idea where these trail, uh, uh, south of six?
Sure, and I, I guess some of the growth potential for the city is in, is in that area. As that growth happens, it makes logical sense for the, for that infrastructure to expand in that area as well.
Sure, go ahead.
Jen, did you ever get that figure of what is our current impact fee?
It's less than seven hundred.
Less than, okay, so it's like six ninety-six?
Six ninety-seven.
And I, I do wanna interray too because again, we, I was at the planning commission meeting last night and, um, it was brought to my attention last night that this impact fee is probably the, it is the lowest in the whole region, I believe I was told last night, uh, especially in this, the whole area. Um, it's very, very low. I think our six ninety-six was the lowest in the whole region and the nine eighty-six will still be, if it's not the lowest, it's one of the lowest in the area.
Part of the recommendation, thank you for bringing that up because I didn't, I didn't mention what the dollar amount is. The dollar amount is nine eighty-six.
I was gonna ask, yeah, okay.
Uh, the, uh, uh, part of the, uh, we presented this to the park board, uh, and they gave critical recommendation on this along with the recommendation of, uh, considering a three percent annual inflation to cover the cost of, uh, the construction cost. Uh, and that was shared last night and also with the planning commission and they, uh, responded the same way with that same recommendation.
One other comment, uh, when we start a, a project such as a trail or a new park area, do we ever identify it through the impact fee so that, you know, with, with a posted sign that would tell the residents that this is first park bringing this into the area, the impact fee money?
I don't know if you do, but that'd be a great thing.
That'd be a real good idea.
What we recommend also that, uh, at the year-end of, that, that the park department presents her final year-end report that, uh, it also would be documented what was brought in and how was the comparison in what areas it was. Yeah.
Good point.
Yes.
But it's my understanding that, um, the impact fee, once it would be passed and approved, is still about six months from being able to collect those fees.
Right. Right.
So if we passed it even tonight, it would still be six months before we could collect any of those fees.
Right. Yeah. So basically with the approval tonight, it would be six months, as you said, before you start collecting on that. We, uh, also will follow up that we recommend that in year four of this campaign or this, uh, this time period that we start studying it again so there's not a gap in between. So you let the other one run out as the other ones keep geared up so there's no gap in those collections.
Right.
The earliest we can begin collecting the, the fee is six months from whenever we pass.
Whenever it's passed.
The additional fee, just start collecting the six ninety-seven, the additional.
Did it not expire?
It expired.
I was gonna say it expired.
Right.
We're not collecting it. I mean, if D R Horton goes and pulls a bunch of permits for their homes, we're not collecting it on our.
We keep, we keep collect.
That's why I go back to you.
How did we allow it to expire? I don't understand that one. How did it expire, Jen? I just.
How did it expire?
Yeah.
Um, the, there's a variety of reasons why it expires. As you can see, it takes multiple departments to get involved in an impact fee. Uh, it takes park department, planning department, mayor's office, city council, planning commission and so the ball was got dropped at that point, which we were looking at improving the impact fee. And what really sparked the interest in the impact fee was whether or not we could use impact fee funds to pay for a new skate park. And then there was really a lot of momentum and so let's look at the impact fee and, um, update it and get on board with the higher municipal.
I, I didn't realize that it expired, so.
Yeah, they expire and again, this is just another pot of money, uh, that we have access to and it's all about future growth in the city. It's, it's not gonna pay for something right now for like a playground or, or whatnot. It, it really is, it is for future growth within the city. And our annual report reflects what, uh, what we spent and what we spent it on. The last major, uh, purchase out of our impact fee was for Dombey Lake because that was a, an acquisition of, that was what the last impact fee was for. So we were able to purchase that out of those fees that were collected.
When did that fee expire, Jenny?
That fee expired, uh, I believe it was June, June last year, June last year.
That's a long gap. We can't have this anymore. I mean, this is ridiculous. I'm a good point in bringing that up.
No.
I mean, there's revenue to be lost in this whole situation. We gotta get better.
Especially with the number of building permits and aggressive building that's taking place. That's a shame.
So, in, if we're gonna bring this up at our next meeting, I mean, is there any value in holding a special meeting to get this passed as soon as possible? I mean, is it, is it gonna make a difference with a month?
Still have it.
I have this.
It's six months.
The six month. I know, I'm, I'm getting, yeah, we'll miss the whole.
Still gonna be.
So, yeah, I mean, we're not gonna be able to move it up.
We missed that whole building since. Is there any way to estimate our loss from that, Jenny?
We would just have to look at what building, uh, that's were issued in the last, uh, six months.
In the six months that it's not.
Well, of eighteen months, yeah, right.
Only six months.
Yeah.
Since June, right? Since June.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's ten months almost.
Well, it will be on collective for six months from today, so it's gonna be.
Well, six months.
Six months, right, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a past.
So we're looking at, um,
November. So, D R.
Well, I'm glad to hear the impact fee is popular though. I mean, it is something that does get passed on to builders and it's pretty exciting that we didn't hear any remonstrance to it. So it's great that, that we would, would issue this and do this and accept those fees from builders and it's, the last time we did this, there was a lot of pushback on. And that's why the fee was so low. So it's, it's great that everyone's on board now to, to have this fee so we can invest in the future of the parks and
Then.
it will happen. I think for the next time around, we'll make sure that all departments and, uh, all officials are involved to make sure that year four we're getting our professional assistance to make sure that we complete the necessary analysis and have it done.
And then, did I hear correctly, there's a three percent increase each year?
It's an inflator, yes, for inflation.
Perfect.
And still would it expire though, Jenny? You still have to go through?
It always expires.
Ten years.
Even if you have the inflator in there, it's still going to expire.
It still expires. So, and again, this funding for this five years is just for these priorities. So the next go-round, we look at different priorities and we analyze what we have in our current park system and whether or not we're meeting the needs of the residents as well as the standards that we've established for recreation in our community. So it's a really complicated thing. It's a great funding source. It's not the end all be all to park funding, but it is, it is again, an investment in the future based on growth in the city.
So, sorry, go ahead.
So, Mr. Lehman, did you do our last park impact fee?
Yes.
So then you know that we have an expiration. Did you contact Jenny and say your, uh, park?
Yes. Yes. Because I've had other departments, other municipalities that say the way. Basically, if it takes six months to do the study and the approvals, we need to start at the beginning, like four years from tonight if that happened. So that basically you, once that's approved, you're waiting that six months, you've still got six months left on the old, uh, ordinance that still you're still collecting on. So you don't allow any of that gap to happen.
Yeah.
At, at what point do you set the expiration date? Does, does this one that's coming before us now already have a, a expiration date?
The state statute states that the ordinance will last no more than five years.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, council, what do we do at this point?
Make a motion to approve the issuance of the notice that we discussed earlier.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the floor, please call a roll.
Councilperson Clem?
Yes.
Councilperson Williams?
Yes.
Councilperson Fecetti?
Yes.
Councilperson Zilly?
Yes.
Councilperson, uh, Prisco?
Yes.
Councilperson Lynch?
Yes.
Councilperson Modesto?
Yes.
I would now like to introduce the second reading of ordinances and we would like to begin with the amendments to Street Address Code sections seventy-four to fifty-two and five seventy-four to fifty-three.
Pat, would you take this, please?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen, an ordinance of the city of Portage, Indiana, amending section seventy-four dash fifty-two and seventy-four dash fifty-three of the city of Portage Municipal Code. Be it and is hereby ordained by the common council of the city of Portage, Indiana as follows. Section one, ordinance, ordinance amendment of section seventy-four dash fifty-two. Section seventy-four dash fifty-two shall be amended by deleting the section in its entirety and by adding the following new section. Any person who violates this division shall have ten days following written notification of non-compliance in which to comply without fine or other penalty. Let the record reflect this has been read in its entirety. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second. Wait, need, wait, hang on.
Yeah, we have a regular councilman, I think. Motion to adopt.
Wait, we.
Motion to adopt.
We got that.
Second.
So.
It happens every year. Yeah, so we're gonna have, uh, Mr. Soroki come up and explain.
Can I also have something to say here real quick before Mr. Soroki's? There's two parts to this and I'd like to attach the second amendment with this reading. And it's the fines that is going along with it. Where'd that go? It's the, um, the schedule, uh, uh, violation bureau selection schedule. And it's just stating actual, uh, updating the fees, the fines. If I can attach this amendment along with the ordinance. It should be as one, but it's listed on the, uh, on the agenda as two, two different ones.
Yeah, why is that?
Why are there two different sections on the schedule?
In, right, in ordinance?
No, we have, uh, a reason we can do, uh,
You can't join me.
No, okay, then we'll just have to do separate amendments? Yeah, that's fine. We'll rid, with the first amendment.
Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Soroki is our code enforcer, uh, chief. Right ahead, sir. Got a motion?
Basically, in, uh, reviewing the ordinance, we all, we also missed the code. Uh, we came upon that, uh, there were two different sections and two different penalties for, uh, violating not posting the address numbers. In order to enforce that, uh, this amendment was, uh, suggested that all that was changing from the nineteen eighty-five ordinance of thirty days' notice and a twenty-five dollar fine after thirty days' notice was to bring it more in line. We either have to, uh, accept this amendment, amend this amendment.
amend this amendment if you don't agree with the times or the penalty, or amend Schedule A in the next ordinance to reflect the twenty five twenty five. That's what's going on. Uh legal counsel uh had suggested that the fines of the fifty and a hundred that the city council approved uh back as late as twenty twelve uh be the one that we do and the state requires that if we give a notice to somebody, we have to let them know what the violation is, what they have to do to address it, and a reasonable amount of time in order to address it. The state recommends reasonable amount of time to be not less than ten or more than sixty, yet we are allowed to adjust it based on any individual thing. Uh therefore, legal counsel had suggested we go to the minimum state suggestion, ten days, and that's why that's in the ordinance as it is now. And that over when you get past, uh I'm constantly getting feedback, fortunately, from uh PD patrol, EMTs, fire people uh about the number of houses that we have that do not have mark on it. And we all know what a safety issue is, especially with the health of an emergency vehicle trying to find this stuff. We currently have a list that we've compiled of over a thousand locations that do not have house numbers up. And this, and again, I'm constantly getting this from other departments and that, uh we're working on a way to uh actively pursue this, especially with spring coming up. This would be a good time. I'll request to have assistance, take a look at their house numbers, see if the winter did some damage to them. But again, until I can enforce this, we can't enforce it until both of us have pulled back.
Point of order, uh Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So what we're doing at this point is we're just going on the ordinance. We're not going on the fines.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, you made a motion to prove.
Yeah, I'm with Tim Pro.
The ordinance.
Motion and a second on the floor.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Any questions for John? Or, sir?
Senator Williams.
Yes.
Councilperson Beckett.
Yes.
Councilperson Zilly.
Yes.
Councilperson Prisco.
Yeah.
Councilperson Lynch.
Yes.
Councilperson Modesto.
Yes.
Councilperson Clem.
Yes.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Motion to approve the violations bureau standard ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any questions?
I just wanna ask John, I mean there's a list here and I'll tell you what, you're gonna be awful busy down there. I mean, I don't know how you handle this, how you even get out. I guess you get calls from various people throughout the city, neighbors, so we're calling on neighbors. I would imagine a lot of that is, I don't even know how you have the time to even go out and look at half this stuff. I mean, I've noticed a lot driving through quarters, that a lot of homes that I've seen are just going downhill. You know, I see trash, litter, garbage, mattresses on the side of houses. I mean, I just don't know if you have enough people, time. I mean, it's not our duty. It's not like I really wanna find people. I mean, really, that's not my objective. It's like the city council person having you do that. It would just be nice if we can get out a solid message to our residents somehow, maybe on one of your videos, John, if you do. The importance of keeping the neighborhoods up and at it so that we don't have to go out and give them a hundred dollar fine or two hundred dollar fine. But for those that just don't care, I guess that's what, I guess that's what.
That's what we're up against.
That's what this schedule is about. Uh back in two thousand and six, uh the ordinance committee, uh when they formed the violations bureau, formed this list and it seems like every three years something comes up where it needs to be looked at. Uh the last time it was looked at was in twenty fifteen when it scheduled, but section ninety was repealed and the whole section ninety was adopted. It needs to be looked at because the uh section of the code had changed into the new section ninety in order to enforce it. All these numbers have to line up. Uh the reason I brought this up now, cause when we discussed it, was in case the city council decided not to approve what you had disapproved, we would have to look at the first line of this and change that. Uh basically, this schedule uh is no increase or changes in fees uh from the twenty fifteen schedule. Uh there were a couple of items added to it as a request. Uh for example, uh section ninety dash two point zero, which is uh where the uh section ninety, that section says that anything not specifically addressed by that ordinance is an unpermitted use. Uh in order to pursue that, the building, the planning department would have to take them to court to do that because we could not issue citations. Violations Bureau can only issue citation for what's on this list. So they asked that to be added. Uh there were also at one point, seven different lines for property maintenance. Over the years, all but two of them fell in line and did the exact same penalties as they were changed over the years. So in order to streamline that, we cadenced those into single lines. Uh that rather than that seven lines on the schedule, we made it into three, plus the two that were, that didn't change, we left on there. Uh so basically, all I'm asking is that if this could approve, uh naturally, the city council, the ordinance committee have.
Right, but at any time, if they want to change these files.
The only caveat is the state limits us, two hundred and fifty dollars is the maximum fine per violation.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with the fine, yes, but the problem is I just want the message to get out to our residents.
Right, and again, this is the last day where the box, if people have been notified and they just refuse to comply for whatever reason, since it's the same series about enforcing the code, I have to be able to issue these.
Violation is just a question. I guess I could answer that question whenever you have issues with residents or commercial places throughout the city. Are there a lot of them, should we take them to court? Or do we go to small claims over stuff like this?
We do go to small claims over some. I mean, the ordinance violations bureau is designed so people can pay the fine at city hall or clerk's office if they don't contest, but if somebody refuses to pay their fine, then the only way to enforce it is to take them to court.
How many cases are here do we, to go to small claims?
Just for all. I, I, off top of my head, I mean, I can certainly look at that.
Yeah, just get back.
For the next meeting or I can email you in lunch now.
John, how many people work in your department? For thirty eight thousand people.
These don't think they're mainly making sure people have fences up around poles for safety, vegetation, uh and then various uh illegal signs that are posted on the cell phone poles, et cetera, RV parked in the street, et cetera, and that type of thing. Uh again, the safety for people with poles and vegetation pretty much takes up one person's day. Just answering those, whether we observe them, whether neighbors call them in, it doesn't really do, it's how we find out about it. Once we find out about it, the ordinance is very specific about how we have to address it prior to issuing citations.
Do you have to issue that citation or say, say someone calls and someone in their home is having a heart attack? And and the ambulance can't find the house cause there's no house numbers. Can they, once they find that house and take care of the business that they need to cite that person, can the fire department cite them? Because they couldn't get to that house?
No.
Maybe that person died?
It would, no, we have, we have, the ordinance provides the violations bureau that the code enforcement is the prosecuting agent that has to issue the citations. Uh and again, we are finalizing a plan to get this out to the public. Uh well, and all interdepartmental communication and cooperation has been excellent for us to get out there. Uh we had to figure a blitz type of situation, still don't know what we did with uh the junk vehicles.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to kinda jump in a little bit here just for everyone's knowledge. I mean, all the departments, police, streets, fire, you know, we we see some of these things, we're reporting to John, if it's something we can't issue a warning ticket on, we'll do that. Obviously, there's, you know, other higher priority calls that happen, but if it's something that, you know, we see is the streets picking up uh trash, they see something that a group reported back to John. So there are a lot of eyes on there, but there are a lot of homes within the city, so it's a, it's a daunting task.
There are only two people in John's department.
One and a half.
Well, let me, let me, let me comment on that. Why do we only have two when you've been approved three? You got a full-time and two part-time? To the budget.
I have no answer to that, sir.
Teddy may have an answer for that. I know.
Go ahead, Ted. Take and explain that.
My question.
Those approved through the budget to have.
We were asked to hold off by the past administration.
Well, the past administration's gone. Will you fill that third spot?
We have discussed that and they have their directions.
My, my, uh, I've been contacting John a lot about issues that are year old.
Right.
And I find that very unfair.
But a part of that is because of the process we talked about there. Part of it, sometimes it takes the process and John.
A year to pick up a tire out of the center of the front yard or garbage out of the front yard or tires or junk cars a year? Knows what I'm talking about.
As to Mark's concern also.
Ted, can you speak up in the microphone?
As to your concern also, um actually, there is a complaint right now because we do try to use the character before we use the space, so to speak. So so people are given opportunity, time to fix these things.
Right.
But some of them would rather just have the citation. We have people that get a day out of there, have to dare to cite because they just, it's it's cheaper for them to pay the citation than just to fix the problems and uses.
That's why we should maybe bump it up a little bit or find out if it's a landlord or if it's an owner. We need to go out to these landlords. I mean, I'm here to, I'm here to protect the taxpayer, not the renter. Bottom line. Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
There should be an ordinance that goes with this schedule. Is there?
That's why I was just gonna ask, is the schedule's here but no ordinance with it, so I was trying to amend it to that.
That was, I believe, I was told that that was tabled in February, that it was presented in the city council in February. I of course.
I think we passed it in February.
Oh, this is what was presented in February.
I think we.
Tabled it because John wasn't here. Yeah, I'm looking in Dropbox. There's an ordinance with it from February, right? Oh, no, this is.
I've got the ordinance in front of me. If it's five four dash ninety.
So if it was tabled, then it's gonna be second reading, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Yes, it's right here.
I don't remember tabling it. I remember passing it.
I remember.
We didn't pass it.
We tabled it.
Cause John wasn't here.
I got his eye surgery.
Uh it it's in the February Dropbox.
Yes, right here.
Pat, did you find it? We can read it.
No, I don't, I don't.
I have it.
Go ahead, Mark, read it.
So, real quick, I'm looking at the minutes from February fifth. Liz is correct. We, we passed this ordinance in February seven to nothing.
Thank you, Tom.
We tabled it. We tabled.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
It's already passed. We don't need to take a second vote.
Nope.
Is that true?
So that I have a question then, being that we're spark, talking about ordinance, what is the one that that I have to amend to get the playgrounds from out of the back or out of the front yards to the background, to the back?
I need to talk to the city council.
I would like to, which one is that now? I'd like to make amendment to change that tonight.
Uh that would be uh Chantara property maintenance. There's a section under that that says dilapidated toys, but it does not say about.
Toys that's been sitting there all winter long and buried and run over by cars.
Again, this is something we can go over to the city council.
We're gonna drop that and we'll be great drafting and bringing it.
And that they would have to answer that.
Okay.
Probably for a ordinance.
We'll get it to you, Pat. Pat, we'll get it on, we'll get it on.
All right. Cause I've been asking about this stuff being cleaned up and it's not being cleaned up, so.
Okay.
An ordinance in it to make it.
Who's chairman of the ordinance committee?
Uh, Mark.
Got an ordinance meeting.
Here, were you correct?
Sir.
Thank you, John.
Good work out there.
We get ahold of that landlord over there to get those cars out of there and all those semi tires and all that crap?
Well, sir, I, we don't discuss cases in the.
Public.
I don't say names or addresses. This is yes or no question.
We have pursued all the cases that you've asked me about.
Okay.
Good job, John.
Will you put that in the email to me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, carry on, Mayor.
I would now like to introduce resolutions, starting off with various transfers, number one.
Liz, could you handle this, please?
I only have one copy of these three.
Resolution, whereas certain extraordinary emergencies have developed since the adoption of the existing twenty nineteen annual annual budget, so that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the twenty nineteen annual budget. Now therefore, to meet such extraordinary emergencies, section one, to be ordained by the common council of the city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of said municipal corporations, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated sent apart out of the several funds or fund herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws that are written in saying. Corporation general fund, one oh one, one hundred, one one one, total a hundred series decrease, a thousand. One oh one, thirty, three one three, total. City hall consulting, total three hundred series decrease, four thousand seven hundred. Corporation L R, L R N S fund, two oh two, two seventy, two thirty one. L R N S equipment repair, total two hundred series decrease, fifty thousand. Two oh two, two seventy, three sixty one. L R N S equipment repairs, total three hundred series decrease, thirty one thousand, four eighty.
Four hundred.
And forty eight and sixty eight cents. Section two, whereas it has been shown that certain existing appropriations now have unobligated balances which have not been, which will not be needed for the purposes for which appropriated, it is further ordained that the following existing appropriations be reduced in the following amount. Corporation general fund, one oh one, thirty, one twenty five, city hall work comp, total one hundred series increase, four thousand seven hundred. One oh one, one hundred, two two two, mayor gas, total two hundred series increase, one thousand. Corporation L R N S fund, two oh two, one four, zero, two three three, L R N S road materials, total two hundred series increase, eighty one thousand, four hundred, forty eight and sixty eight cents. Passed and adopted by the common council of city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana, the second day of April, twenty nineteen.
We should do it, uh.
Second.
Chris, would you like to explain a little bit?
And you'll see a couple of these. We'll have, we have this one. You'll have another one next month and these are um one, are trying to align with the the new administration's change in priorities and then two, there are some just fixing shortfalls. Work comp was, you know, forty, forty seven hundred dollars over, so we have to obviously cover that. And then uh local road and street, they they had salt and road or uh salt and road materials that were high, so we had to pull money to to cover that shortfall.
I have a question for this before it goes into vote, if I can have the floor, Mayor.
Sure.
Why was it disaddressed to the budget committee? I've asked, I've requested two budget meetings this month and I've yet to hear back from our budget chairman. Uh this should go through the budget committee and and uh relined instead of coming before the public and the committee to be voted on. I'm asking the chairman why he hadn't responded in my text or emails and and setting up a budget committee?
Uh the reason why we hadn't set one, Pat, and I know you requested it, was uh we hadn't had gotten all the information we needed. Didn't feel like that we had uh all the data to to meet and to discuss. This was just put into Dropbox three hours ago.
Well, that's why we need to have budget meetings. We won't have to worry about the late notices of moving money wherever it's asked by the clerk treasurer. That's the budget committee's job.
Hold on, Pat. If I could, I I have asked, I I asked the clerk treasurer.
Okay, but that's fine, but we still host budget meetings.
I don't disagree with that. Mister Chairman of the Budget Committee, can we, we get together in the next two weeks and uh and discuss uh the budgets going forward?
Can.
And then we will have a uh a budget meeting uh scheduled. Is that okay, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. We'll get to the bottom of this for you, Pat, and we'll get some things uh things straightened up.
We've always done additional appropriations at the regular council meetings. I don't know what the big deal is.
This is not an additional appropriation. This is a very, uh appropriation. So I guess we can discuss this more at the budget meeting. This would require completely changing how the city is previously operated and and I guess we could talk about the ramifications and what that might entail at the budget meeting, but yeah, if we don't approve these timely, we have to stop paying vendors, so we just have to. But if we don't approve these timely, we have to stop paying vendors. So we just have to be mindful of that. I don't, I don't, I don't get to call that, so.
Probably wouldn't have changed it easily.
Call for the vote, please.
I had a quick question, if I can.
Sure.
So, Chris said aligning, like, priorities. What, what are the changes? Just after you ask.
Well, we had some changes because of personnel. We moved to the proper department they should be paid out of. For example, the mayor's office shouldn't pay for community development directors to come out of their department.
Budget committees.
They should be held, they should be held responsible for their, their, their particular department if that's what they're leading. Um, that's, that's been some of the changes. Uh, there was, there was no gasoline.
In the budget for, uh, for the mayor's office.
Uh, you know. We're going in and apples to try to get us some more road money. Uh, there's no way to pay for gasoline for the, uh, for the trip. And, uh, we, we don't mind, we don't mind paying those out of our own pocket, but after a point, it gets, you know, pretty tough to do that. And then Chris has to do extra, extra work for reimbursement. This way it just comes right out. So it's kind of simple things. We, we do have, uh, and I'm sorry, Madam President, but I would like to say one more thing. I know you want to get on with the vote. Our budget process is broke down and it's a mess.
If we need to change chairmen, I would step up. I'd be more than happy to take that responsibility.
That's not my duty. My duty is to make it right and, and to fix some things going forward. This, this budget has been adopted. We're trying to fix a few things. But, uh, I would like to have the budget discussions talked about and ready to go by September. That's my deadline for, for the budget. And we'll get you that budget from our office by September. Mark my word on that. And then we don't have this argument into December and, uh, and trying to chase Santa Claus down.
You should have monthly updates.
I'd just like to make a comment. I think Scott does a good job when he chaired various boards in the city and whatever. I just think the proper dialogue needs to happen, but I think Scott's.
He's always done a fine job, but when you request a meeting, when you're a member of that committee and you hear a reply, it's, it's a little bit aggravating when there's business to be done.
I would like to say something too. For the additional, the transfers that we're doing right now, it's always been done at a council meeting. Never had to have a special budget meeting to.
It has to be approved by the council.
It is being approved.
But it goes through the budget committee, brought to the council.
These usually never have gone through.
No, it's because you were chairman last time and didn't have budget meetings.
Pat, let me say something, please.
Hold, hold up.
Call for the vote, please. I'd like to call for the vote.
Hold up. We have a, uh, we have a, uh.
Just making one last comment. Over the last twenty-eight years, pretty much, that's the way it's been ranked by every clerk treasurer in the city council. But I mean, there's only dialogue we have, okay? That's it, it's okay.
So, we have a motion on the floor and a, uh, and a second. Can we go ahead and call the roll?
Person Fekety. Councilperson Zilly?
Yes.
Councilperson Naprisco?
Yes.
Councilperson Lynch?
Yes.
Councilperson Modesto?
Yes.
Councilperson Clem?
No.
Councilperson Williams?
Um, I would now like to introduce the resolution for the March temporary interfund loans.
Phil Fekety, could you, uh, go over this, please?
Resolution nineteen, a resolution authorizing temporary interfund loans. Whereas the following temporary interfund loans are necessary for the purpose of maintaining cash operating balances in the funds herein named. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Portage, Indiana, that the clerk treasurer is hereby authorized to make the following temporary loans. Such loans to be secured by a pledge of revenues to be received, which are not otherwise allocated and to be repaid on or before December thirty first, twenty nineteen. To CLPD from General, amount one hundred thousand dollars. To debt SVC from General, five hundred thousand dollars. To CCD from General, two hundred thousand dollars. To Edit from CCI, five hundred thousand dollars. Passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana, this second day of April, twenty nineteen.
Motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Chris, would you like to explain just quickly some of the?
Monthly interfund loan transfers.
That's, that's good enough. Motion on the floor, uh, please call the roll.
Person Zilly?
Yes.
Councilperson Naprisco?
Yes.
Councilperson, uh, Modesto, or Lynch, sorry.
Yes.
Councilperson Modesto?
Yes.
Councilperson Clem?
Yes.
Councilperson Williams?
Yes.
Councilperson Fekety?
Any other?
We would now like to address unfinished business.
Everybody have anything to bring before, uh, the council? Unfinished business?
No.
Uh, new business? I believe we've pulled that, uh, document.
Insurance went through there, yes.
Alrighty. A notice to taxpayers.
Chris, would you like to explain?
Yeah, so this is actually, when I said earlier, realigning priorities, this is the bigger chunk of it. There was only a little bit in the next one. This is a advertisement for next month's, um, meeting that would be, uh, transferred. When, when, uh, when there are transfers that occur from department to department, it requires a public notice. And this would authorize a public notice to bring that up at your next council meeting, uh, May fourteenth.
Making motion to approve.
Second.
So we can advertise that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're getting, we're getting close here. Reception of remonstrances, uh, public input and/or any other business.
I have one more thing here, Mayor.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I have a, a request for a street lamp on Mulberry Avenue. The pole exists. It just need a light on it. Uh, the pole number is three, four, six, over one, one, two.
Where is that?
What's it, what's the street?
It's on Mulberry on the west side of Willow Creek, down near, uh, just west of the bridge, by, about a legion.
Okay.
There's a street there. It's intersection and it's very dark through there.
Making motion to go ahead and approve that. Send that to the board of works for approval.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If yourself, Mayor, if you'd really check into this, I've called the utility, uh, the, uh, NIPSCO numerous times on this. At the curve of Central Avenue, going west on at the S curve. There's a street light out right at that light, at the curve. It's been out for three months. I have numerous phone calls in to ask for requests to have it repaired and it's still out to, to this.
Alright, we'll, we'll get on that. We, we will be, we're meeting with the NIPSCO next week. Uh, that's our second meeting with them.
Thank you.
Marching orders already.
I've called numerous times and.
Alright. We'll get it.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's, uh, if you want the pole number's thir, three, four, two, over four eighty-eight. Welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Um, looks like we have, uh, please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Antonio Poderary. My address is sixty-nine ninety-eight Eisenhower Avenue. I'm here, um, to talk about the two thousand and nineteen Portage Relay for Life, which is just over two months away on June seventh. Um, uh, we're in danger. The American Cancer Society has told us the last two years that we do not increase our numbers, they will pull this event from the city of Portage. Um, the money we raise through our relay for life, it don't go into a national bank or they can pull that money and use it in BFE, Seattle or whatnot. It stays in Portage. The money is used for cancer patients and caregivers that need services in Portage. So I'm asking, um, I know the last few years, uh, this is my eleventh year with relay and I know the city of Portage has not had a team, um, at least the last five to six years. And I would really encourage, um, some department heads or some council members to get together and form a team for the city of Portage. Um, the residents would really like to see you guys support the fight against cancer here in the community.
When is that again?
It's June seventh. It's a Friday. Um, I'd also like to ask, uh, students here who go back to school, reach out to some of your friends, some, uh, student organizations and clubs, and ask them to form a team.
Nice.
You know? So, we, we'd really like to get the youth more involved because our numbers with the youth have really dropped and we haven't had a youth team since the high school wrestling team and that was a couple of years ago.
Thanks, Antonio.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do, too.
My name is Linda Rollins. I'm a host of the council. Is familiar with me? Um, I came here representing, um, what's going on with the opioid crisis and chronic pain patients. Um, one thing that's missing, um, normally I would have Dawn Anderson with me. She was my best friend and my favorite chronic pain patients. The very people that we've been protecting and asking this council to get involved with. Dawn Anderson is now a victim. My friend passed away March eleventh. We came here in December feeling like we were here to educate. We came back in January and we told you, chronic pain patients are dying. They are affected by this so-called opioid crisis. We have a crisis out there, but chronic pain patients didn't do it. We asked this council to come to our meeting that we had at South Lake Hospital in Maryville and even got responses saying people on the council would be there, but nobody came. Dawn was so excited when she got the responses, but then when we had the meeting that day, Mark Lopez came from Peter Vissloski's office. Dan Hennessy came from the attorney general's office. The newspaper came, but nobody here came. This is everybody's job. You all have the platform to help us get from here to here. People are dying. I don't understand what else I need to say. When you go to bed every night and you're, feel lucky when you wake up in the morning because your heart's going through the roof, something is wrong. And I'm here now, um, it's a call to action. I want somebody on this council to get involved and start helping chronic pain patients and tell us what you're gonna do to help us. This is Dawn's daughter, Melissa.
Hi. Hi. Hi, Sue. Um, I'm a friend on Facebook. Um, yeah, I lost my mom a couple of weeks ago. Um, she was here in this room fighting for her life, quality of life, that she was never able to, to get, um, at the end. And she deserved that. She fought on behalf of a lot of people who are struggling with their pain because of the restrictions placed on their medicine. Um, I just want to ask the council to do something because it is urgent. People are being tortured to death. Um, absolutely opioid crisis and addiction, that's a, that's a crisis on itself. But when you are tampering with the medicine of people who need it, that's where we have to draw the line, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry about your vote.
I'm sorry, brother.
Sorry for your loss.
Very sorry. Thank you.
How are you, sir?
Dale Camaro, thirty fifty-one, Alexis Street. I just had, you know, some concerns on how the city of Portage interacts with the national park that we now have. What changes that's gonna do, uh, the city, if it interacts with the parks. And I think, I've done a great job with, um, you know, lead building that's there, the building at that small state sand dune. But I'm kind of wondering in the future, would it have further interaction to do other things environmentally? Because land isn't being made every day. And there still might be some opportunities up there that could kind of, uh, make that somewhat nicer and more natural than what it is. Get into the, get into that point, maybe, uh, trails or, maybe a trail of deeds from, uh, the little county that River Region area, over two, where electric is there. That would go past, uh, the place with the yachts and poles are happening. I think that would brighten up that whole area right now.
We agree. We agree. So, so nothing will change with the, uh, with the national park? Uh, that, that contract and that agreement was, is still in place, uh, with the, with the old, under the old designation? Yes, and, uh, we are, uh, we, we hear you and, and, and there's some plans of, in our strategic plan, which we'll start to announce here, on what, uh, what we should be doing five years from now. So, uh, and, uh, nothing will change out there with the park. We understand.
People come just because of our name.
Yes. Very much aware and it's on the radar screen, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Tom Genovis. I live in twenty-seven eighteen Florida Street. I've been a resident of Portage for about six years and I've enjoyed the, it's a nice small town atmosphere, but we're not really too far from anything you want to do. So I like it here. I woke up the other day and I thought I'd been transported to Illinois because I heard a rumor that the Port City Council was considering an order to ban home base FFLs. And for the life of me, I couldn't figure out why, because the purpose of government is to solve problems, like you've been doing tonight. I couldn't figure out what problem that could possibly cause. But I know if they were kicked out of Portage, it would generate revenue for Hobart and Valpo and the surrounding cities. So I guess my question is, is that really true? And if it is true, what problem does that solve?
That, that is true. That was a consideration, uh, by this council. A council member, uh, on the, on the council, introduced that ordinance. Uh, we believe that ordinance was, uh, was done improperly through the wrong channels. So we pulled that ordinance from the, uh, the agenda tonight to, uh, research and make sure that was, it goes to the proper channels before it comes before this board. Uh, and then once that's done, then we will, uh, put it back on the agenda to consider if that's what the sponsoring council person would like. So that's, that's.
The sponsoring councilman?
That was given to the pastor over there, Cooper, who was brought up last month and he brought it up in front of us at a public, when he spoke.
And I'm just curious what problem would that solve? FFLs have been in Portage and everywhere for decades. Never been any problems reported. Because if there were, we all know about it because the media would jump on it.
Yep. I've, I've never seen any problems with it.
No.
Um, I would never support that ordinance. Uh, it's their right. If they're legally licensed from the federal government to the state, to the city, they're within their rights to do with what they wanted within their own home as a small business.
Exactly.
I'm not a dictator and I'm not a communist. So.
You provide a worthwhile service to residents.
I'm glad you came out tonight and spoke on that because.
Licensing issues, not only with that, but with various other things in the city of Portage. I mean, first homeowners that do sell different types of things that aren't even licensed in the city. I mean, for the last two or three years, I've gone beyond that trying to get something stabilized where whoever has anything they're selling, whether it's from a property, from their home, from a commercial property, has to have a license through, through the city of Portage. It would give telephone numbers, the type of ADT security they have, who's in charge, who's the owner and all those kind of things. So it's more than just this one. There's a multitude of issues that need to be addressed.
This was stating, I think, just FFL. I don't know what other discussion we were, but, but, uh, yeah, that. I would hope that wouldn't pass this council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hopefully we've answered some questions for you.
Reverend Michael Cooper, uh, five five seven, I'm kind of rude, uh, in Portage. Uh, just a clarification on that. Uh, what I wrote before the council last month, uh, which has ballooned into really a traumatic experience here in Portage, was not about the legality of selling firearms, uh, in general. Uh, the question I raised before city council was, are those permitted in residentially zoned neighborhoods? We have two licensed firearm dealers who currently operate in commercially zoned areas. Uh, that was not a concern. But my, my concern were the three FFL, FLAs, FLLs, uh, that were in residential, residentially zoned neighborhoods. Uh, so I raised this before the common council last month, uh, and I reached out with some questions. Uh, I made some phone calls to, uh, the mayor's office. Uh, I have yet to receive, uh, a, a, a phone call in return yet from the mayor. So, Mayor Cannon, I have a few questions. Uh, as executive of the city overseeing the enforcement of ordinances enacted by the common council, does the current zoning ordinance for the city of Portage that states the home occupation must not involve walk-in retail sales or the manufactured operation, does that in ordinance, does that line in our current ordinance include the retail sale of firearms and ammunition in residentially zoned neighborhoods?
Uh, we are looking into that.
Uh, have you discussed that issue with your licensing and determining the.
As to what their recommendations are on that matter?
Yes, as well as legal counsel.
Okay. Um, I have been concerned about the state of the.
Okay, um, I have been concerned about the state of affairs of the city, Mr. Mayor, and... And I was wondering if you could share what those decisions, uh, what those recommendations from your legal counsel and from our office of licensing and permitting was?
Well, there's a process that is in, in place to change any, uh, except...
Asking about the change in ordinance, I'm asking about the enforcement of a currently approved ordinance for the city of Portage. Does retail gun sales and that under FFLs in the city of Portage, are they against the current stated ordinance in the city's primary home occupation that bans retail sales in residential zones?
And, and we're, yes, we're, we're looking into that, and legal counsel is, is reviewing that with our, with our, uh, other members of the staff.
That's, I don't think it is, Reverend.
How is it, well, I mean, I believe that it is not.
Excuse me, sir, if I could, I wasn't quite finished, I was gathering my thought, but... We, we, we don't do things at city government on emotion, we do things on facts. I don't know how it was done in the past, but under my administration, we do it upon facts. And we will research and we will fact, fact base our decisions based on the law. And whatever the law is, is required for us to do under state statute and the constitution. And that's what, that's how we're going to operate, and we are not gonna do something off the, uh...
Well, it's...
Excuse the pun, but we're not gonna shoot from our hip and just do something because some, some one wants something done that may not be, uh, fact-based only on emotions, and that's how we're going to do it. And when our, and when our attorneys determine that it's, uh, it is proper, we will, we will then take action. At this point in time, we go off of facts, and that's the way it's gonna be going forward. You can come up here every single council meeting and come up with something, but it's gonna be on facts, not on emotions.
So is your position, Mr. Mayor, that the operation of retail gun sales in neighborhoods of Portage is an acceptable practice here in city of Portage?
It is.
Not resale.
It is because they are not, it is, we're not gonna get in the weeds about how, how the process works, but it, it is, under our interpretation at this point, yes, it is.
Well, I request the Democrats that are involved...
Hold up, hold up, hold up, wait, 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 wait a minute. Hold on a minute. Come on, hold on a minute. These issues that come before this council, under my leadership and council person, uh, Lynch's leadership, will not be about politics, again, it'll be about facts and not about emotions. And it has no...
Mr. Mayor, I'm totally concerned about the affairs of the city and, and the statements that I've made in less than two minutes in the last common council has, you know, ballooned into such a fight that, in my opinion, you have failed to correct or to stop. I see a complete inaction on the part of the city to enforce its existing city ordinances, and enforcement falls on the responsibility of humans, Mayor.
And I will take that responsibility.
And what I see, Mr. Mayor, is that there is an opportunity for us to make our neighborhood safer. We have an opportunity to...
Yeah, please, FFLs make it safer.
That's right.
All the research is exactly opposite of what you're saying.
Thank you, sir. By the way, I do transfers, not retail sales.
That's correct.
So Chief, Chief Williams would like to make a...
Nobody here next month either.
Troy Williams, uh, sixty-two, sixty central. Uh, I anticipated some questions about this tonight, did a little bit of research, just got a little bit of facts for the council I don't want to give you. Uh, I was here at the last council meeting, uh, the reverend, uh, his initial issue there was a safety. Uh, tonight it's licensing and permitting. So we do have three FFL, uh, licensed dealers licensed through the federal government, uh, in our city. In the last five years, there's been six calls to those three residents. Uh, somebody reported a found cellphone, one was a dog running at large, uh, one was a fraud report, uh, one was a theft report, a couple of them. So in five years, these three residents have had six calls that we had a response to, not a lot of response. Um, something that I, I do want to, uh, state, and again, this is for educational purposes for our residents, because we encourage or we support, uh, responsible gun ownership. In, um, the last four years, the number of stolen firearms from residents, not the FFL dealers, um, for two thousand and eighteen was twenty-eight, two thousand and seventeen was twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen was nineteen, and two thousand and fifteen is eighteen. So, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five-ish stolen guns from gun owners. So we want gun owners to be responsible, unless the reverend is saying that he wants to ban all guns. Um, the FFL dealers are safe, they follow the rules that are in place, and they've not had any major calls that we've had a response to. So we, again, encourage or support responsible gun ownership, and the facts aren't there to say that these businesses or these, uh, sellers aren't doing the safe business.
Thank you. Hi, how are you all?
Hello.
Thank you, sir.
This is Charlotte Hammond, three-one-three James Place. Hello everyone, because I cannot speak, if it is okay, I will have my daughter Charlotte Hammond read what I have written. I watched the last council meeting on, online and felt compelled to come today as I listened to the gentleman ask council to amend an ordinance to ban home-based federal firearms, licensed business in the city. My thought immediately went to, here we go again, to another tack on the Second Amendment, a new backdoor approach to it. The reason I feel this way is the gentleman not once mentioned any other home business, only firearm related. One, yet he claims it's not a Second Amendment issue. Home businesses are just as important and needed as any, in any, in a mall or any storefront. FFL holders are heavily regulated already and some pay large fees to get those licensed along with intense personal interviews and bankrupt checks. I don't see the home Avon dealer going through that. Oh, but I forgot, we were only talking about the firearm businesses. I have spent the past two days trying to find a case of where home FFL was charged of a firearm-related crime and found none. I'm not saying it's never happened, what I am saying is that it's clearly not a problem. I would urge the council to talk to these FFL holders and see how this may affect them and their families. I'm sure this could close down the primary source of income because their home is the only place to run their businesses that they can afford. Instead of regulating these people out of the business, we should be encouraging small businesses. I believe the council can see past people's clear agendas and how this could hurt good people. I also know anything, I also know anything firearm-related is a hot topic right now. And some may want to, want to use this to benefit their costs. So please stand ready and stand firm for what you know, for what you know is right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'm just here to add what, uh, Mayor Cannon said so long, right, Major? Our police chief, uh, Troy Williams, at the lady before me. Uh, I guess I'm gonna use a simple phrase, uh, Reverend Cooper. Uh, Ray Patrick Star said this with similar air between years. Don't tread on me, my Second Amendment rights, uh, my constitution, or our great balance in this country. You wanna tread on somebody, go tread on them in Chicago.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, I am Debbie Podvorsky, I live at two-four-oh-four Jacqueline Street, and I am one of those FFL dealers that you are talking about. We are completely vetted through the federal government, that is the ATF, that is the FBI, the state police, our local police. We are doing our part to make sure that no one walks out the door with a firearm that is not allowed to have it. That is our duty as FFL holders. We do not do walk-in retail business. Myself, the other gentleman that's here that is also an FFL, it is by appointment only, they are transfers. That person has already purchased that firearm, we are simply facilitating what we are instructed by law to do. My husband started this business with me in two thousand and five, we've been doing this for fourteen years, we have never had a problem. There shouldn't be a problem now. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Lawrence Dito, twenty-nine oh-one West Fifty-fourth Place, Maryville. Stop the atomized MNO, just thought I'd make two comments. Uh, number one is, when your lawyer looks at the, if it, if the ordinance is proposed, Indiana Code thirty-five dash forty-seven deals with Indiana destructive devices, so section eleven, if I remember, deals with Indiana state preemption of firearm regulations. And of course, I worked, I didn't print this silly thing out, which I should have done, but if you look at it, cause you, you wouldn't wanna take my word for it anyway. If, you can look this up, it's on the internet, or you can look it up, Indiana Code. Uh, it states that local entities other than the state may not regulate firearms, firearm ammunition, firearm accessories, and that is to include taxation, regulation, and there's more words in there, like I said, look it up, I don't take my word for it. So I just wanna say, before you do anything, look at it, cause ask several other entities, they have set themselves up. Uh, if you violate it, it's what they call triple damages, somebody could take you to court. I haven't got away from it because they have laws that, that break, that's a preemption law, but they were told as long as they don't enforce those laws, nobody can sue. But if you eliminate the firearm licensed dealers and say, I say I went and buy from them, I can say I was now affected by it, now I can sue, when I hire a lawyer, triple damage means you have to pay for my lawyer times three. So that's, as a community needs to think about, that's law, what happens if they break it. And then personally, I would like to say, uh, I think I can speak for a few people here, gun owners. We wanna keep guns away from bad people, we don't want bad people to have guns. But federal firearms licensed dealer, we're not talking about a guy selling it out of his car, he's licensed by the federal government, he's gotta go through a lot of checks, I'm sure we keep an eye on him too. If the guy's selling to criminals, that he's allowing straw purchases, and somebody calls, I don't know about you guys, but I, you know, then that person should be in trouble if they are breaking the law. This affects not criminals, it affects lawful gun owners. I mean, I have to jump through hoops already, I got my license in nineteen ninety-two, my first one. Uh, people have told me, well, if you wanna play with guns, go join the military. Well, I've been there, done that, six years in the Navy, been around firearms since I was eight, so that's somewhere around forty years I've been carrying since nineteen ninety-two. I try, try to follow all the laws, I try to keep up with the law changes, cause every law, every year, laws change. So again, it's hard to keep up with, I try to do that. I'm sure a lot of these gun owners, the same thing, they don't wanna get in trouble, they don't wanna carry a gun into a, into school, they don't wanna, uh, sell to a person as a criminal, we try to follow the laws. How does stopping a licensed dealer stop a criminal from being... Like I said, hey, I don't want murderers to have guns, I don't want rapists to have guns. I don't wanna even use my gun, I, heck, I never have to use it. But it sounds to me like I'm being accused of being a criminal because I can't go jump through my hoops and legally buy a gun. You legally use it at target shooting or competition or just to carry to defend myself, which, you know, I'm not a hothead, I haven't been, you know, look at my record, I haven't, I've got no speeding tickets and that's it. So I know I'm arguing with it, sorry about that, I just wanted to ramp up those two points, one is Indiana Code thirty-five forty-seven dash eleven, and one is, how does this affect a criminal? That's basically breaks down my two say per cent, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the, uh, public for public input?
Smoking to the yard.
We got one, sorry. Sorry.
My name's Kirk Cuskey, twenty-one eleven Wool Creek Road, one of the FFLs. Part of us getting our license, we have to go through a four-plus hour interview by an ATF agent. So we have been thoroughly vetted, they're, I mean, they pretty much looked it up, then. If there's something there, they would not have licensed us. We don't do retail sales, we don't have any, you know, rack of firearms, hey, come on in, look at what you want. Like, like Debbie said, they order their firearm online, all we do is a transfer, we just perform a service. So, and as a service-disabled veteran, it's the only business I have at the moment, I'm currently laid off, so I really rely on it. And I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.